All right, it's five o'clock on Tuesday, September 2nd. It's time for our regular meeting of the Logan'sport City Council. Please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Jeremy Ashcrack?
Here.
Bob Bishop?
Here.
Joe Buck?
Here.
Gary Fox?
Here.
Charlie Hastings?
Here.
Chuck Ledau?
Present.
Teresa Popejoy?
Present.
Approval minutes from the August 4th and August 18th meeting.
Your Honor, I make a motion that we approve both the August 4th and August 18th minutes as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote on approval of minutes.
Chuck Ledau?
Yes.
Teresa Popejoy?
Yes.
Charlie Hastings?
Yes.
Gary Fox?
Yes.
Joe Buck?
Yes.
Bob Bishop?
Yes.
Jeremy Ashcrack?
Yes.
Minutes are approved on a vote of seven in favor and zero opposed. Under comments of the mayor, I would thank council for your hard work. I know we've had an overabundance of things to do in the last thirty or forty-five days. We're approaching a vote on the budget. I appreciate your hard work in the committee meetings that we managed to get through a couple of weeks ago. As you know, we sent out a notice last week, I believe it was, notifying you of two special meetings coming up. One of them will be September 11th, the other one will be September 17th. At that time, we will be considering the development agreement. That's the only thing to be considered at that time unless you choose to add something to it or if another issue comes up. So again, I thank you for your hard work. I'm sure there'll be much discussion about it between now and that time. So just be prepared to put in even more hours. Are there any petitions or comments of citizens? John?
Good evening. John Hippskin, Director of CLEDO, 311 South Fifth Street. A couple of things. At the last meeting, August 4th meeting, I mentioned to you about the succeed funds and that we were going to refund eighty-five hundred dollars to the city and the county. I dropped the check with Carol Sue about fifteen minutes ago. So the eighty-five hundred from the CLEDO succeed fund to back to seed it for the city has been returned today.
Thank you.
Side note, I sent the same presentation and letter to the county and their letter from Friday requested seventeen thousand dollars. I reminded them that the funding was half and half because it had been funded that way and they immediately walked over a corrected version of the letter asking for half of the seventeen. So I don't, I'm sure it was just an oversight. Two other things I'd like to mention today. One is when you get to ordinance 2014-27, which is on the CLEDO funding, I would just like to ask for your support to at least approve the seventy-five thousand that was reused from ninety to seventy-five. I would like to request that you consider approval of at least the seventy-five as submitted. And when you get to ordinance 2014-37, which is on the spec building, I would like to request that that ordinance be tabled prior to a second vote. We're getting late in the build season again. We cannot get the surveys completed on the properties at the industrial park before approximately November 1st with all the meetings that that has to go through, become a subdivision. So we're going to miss the fall building season. So I'd like to ask that that 2014-37 be tabled and it may be reintroduced in the springtime.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Are there any more petitions or comments of citizens?
Good evening, members of the common council of the city of Logan'sport. My name is Jim Brew. I reside at thirteen fifteen East Market Street here in the city. I have addressed you on previous occasions for a couple of years with regard to the generation of electricity. The request I make this evening, the comment I make this evening, is now that we have the development agreement in hand, I ask you to consider it in combination with the power purchase agreement and see an abundance of reasons for not passing these documents, which I will briefly recite my reasoning for in an effort not to repeat what I've said before. A good teacher reviewing for a test says, isn't this a summary of the lessons that we have learned so far? You do not know the identity of the seller of electricity whom you are presuming in these documents to do business with, with LMU as the buyer. Whether it's identified as TCS, Logan'sport Energy Group LLC, or Logan'sport Energy Group LLC, there are no such entities if you check with the Secretary of State where limited liability corporations and other business enterprises are registered. So you don't know who you're dealing with. This whole effort to create these documents and do business in this fashion has been a secret method. I also respectfully remind you of what you already know, that is, people form LLCs in order to be, to have limited liability. That's what the LL stands for. So right away, you should wonder about what is the solvency of the entity, the unknown entity with whom you are doing business? How deep is the pocket of this business which has been described as able to enter into, you know, eight-hundred million dollars of undertaking? Don't forget that when you advertised for pyrolyzer and said to the public that pyrolyzer had the capital, then Frank Canterbury came to town and told the service board that, in fact, that finance source of capital failed in the public-private agreement undertaking which initiated this entire process. So I'm talking to about a problem with solvency, reason to be careful about who you're doing business with, whether they have the capital. Second, there's a lack of engineering. On the public, on the power purchase agreement, the Exhibit B called, description of the facility is blank. On the development agreement, Exhibit A, detailed description of the facility is blank. Project site Plan B is blank. Page sixteen refers to Exhibit C, ID the developer, that's also missing. You don't have any engineering. Let's go back to engineering. LMU paid fifty thousand dollars for this study by the St. Louis group. That was the last time anybody in this building had an engineering plan that was shared with the public. This engineering plan was rebuffed and publicly dropped by both Superintendent Hartman and Mayor Franklin on the occasion of the launching of Gary Peterson's November 27, 2012 document, which said, burn trash, refuse to buy fuel, and this mantra or this repetition statement, generate electricity at four and a half cents to five and a half cents per kilowatt hour, Mr. Peterson's paper at the start of all this said, well, we've done a study, I've done a study. There's never been any evidence of a true study. Within the electricity industry, when people talk about how many cents it takes per kilowatt hour to generate electricity, there are pages and pages of numbers and calculations and all the metrics are explained to the public. And that's how you sell things. You're talking repeatedly in this document, I don't mean you personally, to the same formula, four and a half cents to five and a half cents, and there's no study, there's no engineering of the process, and you have to know the process to know the equipment that's being used, to know the efficiency, and that's how you calculate the cost per kilowatt hour. So it's never been documented, there's no engineering to back it up. That same engineering would begin to describe what the environmental consequences are, the emissions, none of which is referenced or controlled in these documents here for the benefit of the public. So that all started a long time ago and there's been this march of superintendent and the mayor and the consultant, Mr. Peterson. And now here we are, at least one point two million dollars later, the evidence with the six checks that were submitted by the mayor, Mr. Peterson's firm, to the clerk, which were paid with close to no detail whatsoever. Lot of money, the money's gone. And there's still been no accounting. With regard to other aspects of what's not a good idea about this new proposal with this unknown entity, this limited liability company, is this development agreement has no end, no end to it, no end date. And in the law, there's no precedent for such a contract without an end date. And so it's the exchange of the captive Logan'sport Utility Service market, it's a captive market, there's a map, and LMU controls that map and has to give services. There's no end date, and that's a concern. This development agreement, I've compared it to other development agreements and I won't repeat what I've already published, it's been online, it's been in the newspaper, of how to write a development agreement with the city's interest in mind. This development agreement is written from the vantage point and the advantage of the developer, not the city. And I think it's important finally to note that this development agreement under the miscellaneous section on page seventeen says forever, the city cannot take any action adverse to the terms in this, what I've already said is an uncertain, detailed agreement. So from the point of view of history and what is in the, going to be in the teacher's test, and what have we learned so far, that's a good, quick summary of why those documents should not be voted in by you and become part of the city's history that goes on without date at such an expense. Please think about it.
Thank you, Jim. Are there any more petitions or comments of citizens? All right, hearing none. Are there any reports from committees, boards, or commissions? Okay. Under old business, ordinance 2014-23, Councilman Bishop, please.
Ordinance 2014-23, ordinance of the common council of the city of Logan'sport, Indiana concerning changing the maximum balance on the cumulative non-reverting health insurance fund. Your honor, I make a motion for a second vote on the ordinance 2014-23.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. I'm sorry, Councilman Bishop?
I'm concerned about these ordinances once again being out of order. I believe our attorney has checked on that. It's according to our bylaws, section, I think it's thirteen and fifteen. Thirteen says that we have to take an ordinance second vote in consecutive order. Fifteen says, though, that we can suspend the rules in order to get around thirteen. So if we, if that's the case, I will make a motion to suspend the rules on all of these second readings tonight.
If I may weigh in, thank you for the heads up. Legal counsel, city attorney head, and I have reviewed these. And the last meeting that really throws us out of sequence was a special meeting called for the purpose of considering four ordinances and four ordinances only. So at that point, it became a special meeting and is therefore not considered to be part of the regular, as a part of our regular agenda, or would follow the regular monthly scheduled meeting. If council desires, they can suspend the rules and accept your motion, but, and the city attorney can weigh in at any time, we don't feel it's necessary because the last meeting was a special meeting to consider only those four subjects.
The ordinance that you're speaking about, Councilman Bishop, talks about having resolutions or ordinances read at consecutive meetings. It also says when our regular meetings are to take place and that a special meeting can be called. And I interpret that to mean that a special meeting doesn't upset the order. Okay, you've made a motion, you're entitled to make it, and the council may vote on it, you know, if it chooses to do so.
Well, if we don't need it, don't, but if we're concerned that it could be a problem, I'd go ahead and make that motion, and if it passes, then we know we don't have a problem, I guess. But I'm not going to dispute the attorney's advice on it, so I withdraw my motion.
So we're, I'm sorry, we're back to ordinance 2014-23. It's been moved and properly seconded. There was no discussion. We'll call for a vote on ordinance 2014-23 on second reading.
Jeremy Ashcrack?
Yes.
Bob Bishop?
Yes.
Joe Buck?
Yes.
Gary Fox?
Yes.
Charlie Hastings?
Yes.
Chuck Ledau?
Yes.
Teresa Popejoy?
Yes.
Ordinance 2014-23 has passed on second reading on a vote of seven in favor, zero opposed. Ordinance 2014-24 and 25 were tabled at the last meeting. Chief Clark is here. Chief, would you want to address those two? They both were pertaining to police department.
Twenty-four, 2014-24 is the mandatory bicycle registration. At this time, I think I'll just go ahead and withdraw the ordinance for consideration, and we will just keep it mand, or voluntary rather than mandatory for bicycle registrations. And we are going to, we're in the process of reviewing a property policy. Currently, we have city auctions, surplus auctions, once a year, and we are going to do it within the confines of the law. Attorney head is looking into it, rather be sixty days, thirty days, but we're going to get rid of the bicycles sooner. Since the auction that we had in June, we've already accumulated eighteen bicycles and none of them are registered. In my eyes, would be an easy fix to, if they were registered, call the people, come get your bikes, but the opposition that I've received and phone calls and such, I just think it's better just to leave it as it is and be a voluntary choice by the bicycle owners. Any questions on that one? Twenty-five, we're still, I gotta get with, sit down with Attorney Head and go over the, with the new laws that have changed that came into place. We're going to review those and make sure that we're on target with the proposed ordinance. So at this time, I would just ask that it be tabled, or I can come back to you when we're prepared.
What was twenty-five again? What was it about?
Twenty-five was the substance, intoxicating substances.
Spice.
Yes.
Okay.
Any questions?
Thank you, chief.
Before you run off, I've got, I should have asked when you were up here earlier tonight, but it's related to twenty-six. We had talked about fees associated with that. The twenty-five dollar fee for businesses, is that going to be per site or per business? Because I know there was some discussion about that at the last meeting, Councilman Ledau specifically brought up this.
In my eyes, it would be per site, per alarm system, because if you use schools, for example, Columbia's going to have different contacts than what Lincoln's going to have and vice versa. So, you know, unless you, you know, have a different outlook on it, that's what I would interpret it to be, would be per site.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Ordinance 2014-26, Councilman Hastings, please.
Ordinance 2014-26, an ordinance requiring all business and residential owners within the city of Logan'sport to register their alarm systems with the Logan'sport Police Department. Your honor, I call for a second reading on ordinance 2014-26.
Second. Ordinance 2014-26 has been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion?
I would just like to comment that the way this reads is twenty-five dollars per business, not twenty-five dollars per business site. I personally don't have a problem with twenty-five dollars per business. I'm not real fond of twenty-five dollars per business site, but if that's what the chief's intent is, that is not how this reads. And if nothing else, this experience of serving on council has taught me that there is no room for error in verbiage. So what's thought of some of my fellow council members on it? Do you see what I'm saying, or?
I do, Jeremy, and I was going to make a motion to amend anyway and drop the third whereas, I think in reading through and understanding it, the money that would be generated by people who constantly abuse us would, would come through the fee structure of the penalties. And I think, other than that, it just, it's there to help reduce some of the labor in the police force, so I don't think we should be charging anybody for it, but that's my opinion.
I don't have an issue with charging the registration fee if it covers costs related to administration at the police department. But I do have some heartburn over twenty-five dollars per business site, but again.
It doesn't really say that, does it?
It doesn't, and that's my concern.
It says for businesses.
Yeah.
Do you want to amend that?
I think we should make it per alarm system rather than business site, or I don't, at least that's what my logic would be. You know, it could be like the Logan'sport Mall or a big, big location that has several...
Well, even within that, there are several businesses there. I mean, you couldn't very well charge pennies if, because I know when I worked there, there was a door at the front of the building that if the air conditioning kicked on just right and that door wasn't latched, it'd pull that door open. It could be one of the motion sensors. Well, you can't charge Sears for that. Well, you can't charge Sears for anything.
Well, what I was thinking is that pennies would have their own system and Sears might have their own, or, I'm not sure how it works.
They have their own.
They each have their own, so it should be per system, maybe, you think? If you want to change it.
And if I could weigh in, would you also consider a school as a business? And maybe there's a third description that would cite, I know in the fire department reports, there are businesses, residential properties, and then governmental, government units.
I was going to say, wouldn't that be a government unit or a public entity?
Right.
Well, you could just make it cover all alarm, any, each.
Any non-residential?
Any alarm owner, or, you know, it doesn't matter who, if it's business, of course, you have to separate the fees, yeah.
Well, even if you said non-residential and residential.
Yeah, there you go. That'd work. I have one other question, Mike. On the, on alarm systems, if I install my own alarm in my house and it doesn't call anybody but me, would I still need to register that if you wouldn't get a call on it? Because I know a lot of people set up their own alarm systems and it wouldn't, and I've always thought I didn't know that I wanted it, sent it directly to police because I'd rather know it myself first, so.
First or only?
Only, if it was only me. And then if I thought I had a problem, I'd call the police. I mean, that's, I'm just wondering, because I know some, a lot of people, especially nowadays, they're setting up a lot, you can go to any Home Depot, any place to set up your own alarm systems.
I'm sure.
And they're not from company, so would I need to register that?
I would say...
Just saying I've got alarm system. The only thing it would do is maybe an alarm would go off and annoy my neighbors, that the horn's going off or something, but.
I would say in that case, if you have an audible alarm outside, the police are going to get called and that the owner of the alarm system has a duty to make sure it's properly maintained and functional. Attorney head, is that, is there some other language that needs to be in there to, you know, I don't necessarily know if we're not responding, if it's just for a property owner's information that he has an alarm, would that be included?
If you're not responding, I don't see any way you would even know we had, I had one, I guess, so I don't know why I would have to register.
Section one, the ordinance defines a false alarm as an alarm eliciting a police response when the situation is not in warrant such a response.
Yeah.
I suppose it would help to clarify, to add that sentence to that, saying whatever the council wishes the policy to be, that an alarm that does not...
Well, I guess if it doesn't elicit a police response, it wouldn't need to be registered then.
What Mike's saying, though, if you have an audible alarm and you're gone for the weekend and your neighbor's called the police, that, that's a police response.
Right. But if you didn't have that audible alarm, you wouldn't need that. But I see it. If there's any way a police should be contacted, I think it should be registered then, I guess.
Yeah.
Okay. So what do we need to do to this?
Well, I will make a motion to amend the third whereas, to read, whereas the Logan'sport Police Department will require the registration of all residential and non-registered, non-residential alarm systems and strike the fees for not registering. I mean, strike the fees, the registration fees. What are we striking? It would read on the third whereas, instead of the reading the way it does now, it would read, whereas the Logan'sport Police Department will require the registration of all residential and non-residential alarm systems. Semi-colon and. I'm sorry. Semi-colon and after that. There will be no registration fees. Right, after you get done, the registration of all residential and non-residential alarm systems, semi-colon and. That stays, right? The semi-colon and the and stay? Yeah.
Yeah.
And whereas the four. Sorry, I had to follow what you were saying, Randy. No problem.
So you're...
There was a second.
I think Chuck seconded it.
There's an amendment.
I'm sorry, hold. We have, first, we have an amendment by Jeremy and a second by Chuck, and then was there another amendment?
The vote on the first one first.
Okay.
Clarification of the semi-colon and.
Okay.
Yeah.
And Chief Clark, you're going to...
Can I?
Please, sir?
So you're saying just take away the registration completely?
No, they'll be required to register, but there won't be a fee associated with registering. They'll still be required to come and register.
And it would be everybody.
You won't charge them.
That way you get, you get schools, you know, residential and non-residential, because if you have business and residential, you might have government agencies that aren't business, and so that would take...
I get that portion, but this is going to take a lot of work. It's not going to be done in an hour or two hours, that's going to take days. You're going to have all the contacts for the, for the businesses, for the residences, you're going to have their addresses, their phone numbers, going to be a lot of data entry. But, you know, it's your choice, if that... Uh, if that's, I was just trying to.
So, you're saying you, you feel like you need the registration fee for administrative costs?
Chief, can you have them register online and just?
Could have. We could put it on our website, absolutely.
And then be able to harvest that information and put it into your files so it would be less labor intensive?
It could probably be cut and pasted by our people, but, uh, that's something I'd look at. But, you know, I'm just glad to have the, the penalty portion in place. I, I'm pleased that you guys are entertaining that. So, but it is going to be a lot of work and that's why I put that in there. And it got reduced, I think, the last meeting, Councilman Ledau made, uh, made a motion that the residential be down to five dollars. But the money, we're not doing it as a fundraiser. I was just trying to hopefully.
No, and I didn't.
Sure. Sure.
I never.
But no, I, I'm glad to get, get the, the ordinance in place and get the, uh, penalty portion in, just to kind of keep the people in line with what we should be doing because of all the false alarms and such.
I don't have a problem with that at all.
Okay.
Is that, does that reflect in here?
Okay. Okay. Okay, are you ready for a vote on this amendment?
I think so.
Okay, we'll call for the question on.
Um, let me clarify, are we taking the five dollars out or not?
Yes.
Taking both, both fees down to zero.
Neither one.
Neither one.
I'm okay with fees. Okay. That's the motion.
Okay, call for a vote on the motion.
Jeremy Ashcraft?
Yes.
Bob Bishop?
Yes.
Joe Buck?
Yes.
Gary Fox?
Yes.
Charlie Hastings?
Yes.
Chuck Ledau?
Yes.
Teresa Popejoy?
Yes.
Okay, the amendment passes on a vote of seven in favor, zero opposed. That's the first amendment. Counsel, as, as a point of clarity and to hopefully prevent a revisit of this issue later on, if you will look on page three of the amendment, I mean, sorry, page three of the ordinance, there is another proposed amendment that would be section six, and that is to keep the state more of accounts happy. We have to know where the fees will be placed, any fees that are collected. So, if, if somebody would be kind enough to offer that as another motion.
Your Honor, I, um, want to offer a motion to amend the ordinance and add section six, which states, "All fees and fines collected shall be placed in the non-reverting law enforcement fund four eighty-six."
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Okay, we'll call for a vote on the second amendment, which is section six.
Teresa Popejoy?
Yes.
Chuck Ledau?
Yes.
Charlie Hastings?
Yes.
Gary Fox?
Yes.
Joe Buck?
Yes.
Bob Bishop?
Yes.
Jeremy Ashcraft?
Yes.
The second amendment passes on a vote of seven in favor, zero opposed. Is there any more discussion regarding ordinance two thousand fourteen twenty-six? All right, we'll call for a vote on ordinance two thousand fourteen twenty-six in its entirety as amended.
Gary Fox?
Yes.
Charlie Hastings?
Yes.
Chuck Ledau?
Yes.
Joe Buck?
Yes.
Bob Bishop?
Yes.
Teresa Popejoy?
Yes.
Jeremy Ashcraft?
Yes.
Ordinance two thousand fourteen twenty-six passes on a second vote, on a favor, on, on a second vote, seven in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you, Chief.
Next, Chief. Ordinance two thousand fourteen twenty-seven, Councilperson Popejoy, please.
Ordinance two thousand fourteen twenty-seven, ordinance pertaining to economic development efforts concerning the city of Logan Sport and the City of Logan Sport Economic Development Organization. Mayor Franklin, I call for a second vote on ordinance fourteen twenty-seven.
Second. Ordinance two thousand fourteen twenty-seven has been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion?
Uh, yeah. Your Honor, I have, uh, one thing here that on our copy here, uh, we struck out the ninety thousand, put seventy-five and added from seated receipts, but, uh, it doesn't show, I mean, I, that we didn't strike the ninety thousand. That should be struck and put seventy-five.
It is.
It shows online, Sean.
Oh, it does?
Yeah, it shows it online.
Mine is.
Both, both of those amendments, as you, as you mentioned, Councilman Bishop, are reflected on page three. All right, you're talking about the, the written amount?
Saying that's still there.
Okay.
The seventy-five, but not the printed.
The wording.
The wording. Okay. Okay, I see what you're saying.
Oh. Details. That's why I missed that. I can read twenty-two.
Is, is that an amendment, Councilman Bishop?
Uh, I think we certainly need to change that, so.
Is it, does it suffice?
How much sense, but I'll make a motion to change the ninety thousand dollars in print to seventy-five thousand dollars.
Second. Okay, we have an amendment on page three to reflect the change in the verbiage, the written verbiage, not the numerics, to reflect the change from ninety thousand dollars to seventy-five thousand dollars. It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? I'll call for a vote on the amendment.
Gary Fox?
Yes.
Charlie Hastings?
Yes.
Chuck Ledau?
Yes.
Teresa Popejoy?
Yes.
Joe Buck?
Yes.
Bob Bishop?
Yes.
Jeremy Ashcraft?
Yes.
Ordinance two thousand fourteen twenty-seven has been amended. Now, ordinance two thousand fourteen twenty-seven in its entirety.
Jeremy Ashcraft?
Yes.
Bob Bishop?
Yes.
Joe Buck?
Yes.
Gary Fox?
Yes.
Charlie Hastings? Chuck Ledau?
Yes.
Teresa Popejoy?
Yes.
Ordinance two thousand fourteen twenty-seven passes on a vote of seven in favor, zero opposed. Ordinance two thousand fourteen twenty-eight, Councilman Buck, please.
Ordinance two thousand fourteen dash twenty-eight, an ordinance of the common counsel of the city of Logan Sport, Indiana, approving a change in rates and charges of the Logan Sport Department of Stormwater Management. Your Honor, I call for a vote on two thousand fourteen twenty-eight.
Second. Ordinance two thousand fourteen twenty-eight has been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote on ordinance two thousand fourteen twenty-eight.
Gary Fox?
Yes.
Charlie Hastings?
Yes.
Joe Buck?
Yes.
Bob Bishop?
Yes.
Chuck Ledau?
Yes.
Teresa Popejoy?
Yes.
Jeremy Ashcraft?
Yes.
Ordinance two thousand fourteen twenty-eight passes on second reading on a vote of seven in favor, zero opposed. Ordinance two thousand fourteen twenty-nine, Councilman Ashcraft, please.
Ordinance two thousand fourteen dash twenty-nine, ordinance of the common counsel of the city of Logan Sport, Indiana, regarding a fund for the memorial home. Your Honor, I call for a vote on ordinance two thousand fourteen dash twenty-nine.
Second. Ordinance two thousand fourteen twenty-nine has been moved and properly seconded. Under section three, um, I'm sorry, not section three, it's under the number three, after therefore be it ordained, uh, we left that amount blank. We have received approximately twelve thousand dollars. And that was the money that we received from the county to help offset the fees to get us through this year. I would propose that we submit the amount of twelve thousand dollars in that.
Your Honor, I make a motion to amend ordinance two thousand fourteen twenty-nine on number three. The common counsel hereby appropriates twelve thousand dollars.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded to amend, um, number three to reflect the number twelve thousand dollars. Is there any discussion on that amount? We'll call for a vote on the amendment.
Joe Buck?
Yes.
Gary Fox?
Yes.
Charlie Hastings?
Yes.
Chuck Ledau?
Yes.
Teresa Popejoy?
No.
Bob Bishop?
Yes.
Jeremy Ashcraft?
Yes.
Ordinance two thousand fourteen, uh, I'm sorry, the amendment is, the amendment passes on a vote of six in favor, one opposed. Now, ordinance two thousand fourteen twenty-nine in its entirety, oh, wait a minute, ordinance two thousand fourteen twenty-nine, is there any more discussion? Keep in mind, counsel, that, um, this is not an ordinance that authorizes acceptance of the property. It's only an amount, an ordinance that allows us to pay the bills with the money that was provided by the council. This is not an appropriation or an additional appropriation of monies generated by the city. This money came from the county to pay for expected expenses through the remainder of the year.
Ted, on number, on line number three, did we deposit the county's money into Rainy Day?
It, we are, we're still holding the checks. We're still holding the checks. They haven't been deposited yet.
Okay. So, can we?
Yep. We, we can't deposit the checks until we take care of the housekeeping issues, this one before us.
Okay.
Call for a vote on ordinance two thousand fourteen twenty-nine.
Jeremy Ashcraft?
Yes.
Bob Bishop?
Yes.
Joe Buck?
Yes.
Gary Fox?
Yes.
Charlie Hastings?
Yes.
Chuck Ledau?
Yes.
Teresa Popejoy?
No.
Ordinance two thousand fourteen twenty-nine passes on second reading on a vote of six in favor and one opposed. Ordinance two thousand fourteen thirty, Councilman Fox, please.
Ordinance two thousand fourteen dash thirty, uh, for the rezoning of nine fifteen East Main Street, Logan Sport, Indiana. My motion for the second reading of ordinance two thousand fourteen dash thirty.
Second. Ordinance two thousand fourteen thirty has been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I would point out that this rezoning request is, was made by the property owner. This is, uh, this is driven by the property owner, so it allows him a, a better use of the property. Call for a vote on ordinance two thousand fourteen thirty.
Teresa Popejoy?
Yes.
Jeremy Ashcraft?
Yes.
Bob Bishop?
Yes.
Chuck Ledau?
Yes.
Joe Buck?
Yes.
Gary Fox?
Yes.
Charlie Hastings?
Yes.
Ordinance two thousand fourteen thirty passes on second reading on a vote of seven in favor, zero opposed. Ordinance two thousand fourteen thirty-one, Councilman Ledau, please.
Ordinance two thousand fourteen thirty-one, amending the Logan Sport and Fringe zoning ordinance commitment standards. Your Honor, I call for a vote on ordinance two thousand fourteen thirty-one.
Second. Ordinance two thousand fourteen thirty-one has been moved and properly seconded. Planning Director Aaron Shaver is here, if there's any questions. Is there any discussion on fourteen thirty-one? Call for a vote on ordinance two thousand fourteen thirty-one.
Joe Buck?
Yes.
Gary Fox?
Yes.
Bob Bishop?
Yes.
Charlie Hastings?
Yes.
Chuck Ledau?
Yes.
Teresa Popejoy?
Yes.
Jeremy Ashcraft?
Yes.
Ordinance two thousand fourteen thirty-one passes on second reading on a vote of seven in favor, zero opposed. Ordinance two thousand fourteen thirty-two, Councilman Bishop, please.
Thirty-two?
Thirty-two.
Ordinance two thousand fourteen dash thirty-two, amending the Logan Sport and Fringe zoning ordinance improvement location permits. Your Honor, I call for a second reading or vote on ordinance two thousand fourteen dash thirty-two.
Second. Ordinance two thousand fourteen thirty-two has been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Call for a vote on ordinance two thousand fourteen thirty-two.
Teresa Popejoy?
Yes.
Chuck Ledau?
Yes.
Charlie Hastings?
Yes.
Gary Fox?
Yes.
Joe Buck?
Yes.
Bob Bishop?
Yes.
Jeremy Ashcraft?
Yes.
Ordinance two thousand fourteen thirty-two passes on second reading on a vote of seven in favor, zero opposed. Ordinance two thousand fourteen thirty-three, Councilman Hastings, please.
Ordinance two thousand fourteen dash thirty-three, amending the Logan Sport and Fringe zoning ordinance signage standards. Your Honor, I call for a vote on, second vote on ordinance two thousand fourteen dash thirty-three.
Second. Ordinance two thousand fourteen thirty-three has been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote on ordinance two thousand fourteen thirty-three.
Jeremy Ashcraft?
Yes.
Bob Bishop?
Yes.
Joe Buck?
Yes.
Gary Fox?
Yes.
Charlie Hastings?
Yes.
Chuck Ledau?
Yes.
Teresa Popejoy?
Yes.
Ordinance two thousand fourteen thirty-three passes on second reading on a vote of seven in favor, zero opposed. Ordinance two thousand fourteen thirty-four, uh, Councilperson Popejoy, please.
Ordinance two thousand fourteen thirty-four, an ordinance of the common counsel of the city of Logan Sport, Indiana, for the additional appropriation of funds for the Department of Public Works and Safety. Mayor Franklin, I call for a second vote on ordinance two thousand fourteen thirty-four.
Second. It's been moved and properly seconded. I, I would ask for one clarification here, and not so much a clarification, but this is for the Department of Public Works and it's not for the Department of Public Works and Safety. So, uh, if you could strike safety, I think that would satisfy the needs. It's been moved, moved and properly seconded to consider ordinance two thousand fourteen thirty-four. Is there any discussion? Call for a vote on ordinance two thousand fourteen thirty-four.
Bob Bishop?
Yes.
Joe Buck?
Yes.
Gary Fox?
Yes.
Charlie Hastings?
Yes.
Chuck Ledau?
Yes.
Teresa Popejoy?
Yes.
Jeremy Ashcraft?
Yes.
Ordinance two thousand fourteen thirty-four passes on second reading on a vote of seven Ordinance 2014-34 passes on second reading on a vote of seven in favor, zero opposed. I felt like I needed to offer that for clarity. I saw the Chief Clark's eyes light up in the back. He thought he, he thought he just hit 40,000. Okay, ordinance 2014-35, Councilman Joe Buck, please.
Okay, ordinance 2014-35, an ordinance of the common council of the city of Logan'sport, Indiana, concerning zoning citations. Your Honor, I call for a vote on 2014-35.
Second. Ordinance 2014-35 has been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote on ordinance 2014-35.
Gary Fox?
Yes.
Joe Buck?
Yes.
Charlie Hastings?
Yes.
Bob Bishop?
Yes.
Chuck Ledau?
Yes.
Jeremy Ashcraft?
Yes.
Teresa Popejoy?
Yes.
Ordinance 2014-35 passes on second reading on a vote of seven in favor, zero opposed. Ordinance 2014-36, Councilman Ashcraft, please.
Ordinance 2014, wait a minute, you said 36?
Yeah, 36.
I don't have a 36.
You don't? It's no emergencies.
Wait a minute, wait, 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 maybe I have one in this packet. I don't have one in either packet, how can that... Ordinance 2014-36, an ordinance of the common council of the city of Logan'sport, Indiana, concerning snow emergencies. Mayor Franklin, I call for a vote on ordinance 2014-36.
Second. Ordinance 2014-36 has been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote on ordinance 2014-36.
Gary Fox?
Yes.
Charlie Hastings?
Yes.
Chuck Ledau?
Yes.
Teresa Popejoy?
Yes.
Jeremy Ashcraft?
Yes.
Bob Bishop?
Yes.
Joe Buck?
Yes.
Ordinance 2014-36 passes on second reading on a vote of seven in favor, zero opposed. Ordinance 2014-37, Councilman Gary Fox, please.
Ordinance 2014-37, an ordinance of the common council of the city of Logan'sport, Indiana, approving the appropriation for the construction of a spec building to be located in the Cass Logan'sport Industrial Park. I motion for, or I motion for the ordinance 2014-37.
Your Honor, we wanna table this, so do we take a second or do we table it first?
You can table it first.
Okay.
Is that...
I changed my motion to a table. I motioned to table.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and properly seconded to table ordinance 2014-37 until sometime in the future. And is there any discussion on the table? Call for a vote on tabling ordinance 2014-37.
Gary Fox?
Yes.
Charlie Hastings?
Yes.
Chuck Ledau?
Yes.
Joe Buck?
Yes.
Bob Bishop?
Yes.
Jeremy Ashcraft?
Yes.
Teresa Popejoy?
Yes.
Ordinance 2014-37 is tabled until further notice. Ordinance 2014-38, Councilman Ledau.
Ordinance 2014-38, an ordinance of the common council of the city of Logan'sport, Indiana, regarding a blight elimination program, the BETP. Your Honor, I call for a vote on ordinance 2014-38.
Second.
Ordinance 2014-38 has been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote on ordinance 2014-38.
I'm curious, on the, it looks like the long two, three, four, fifth, whereas the IHCD A will reimburse, reimburse the city of Logan'sport, is it going to be reimbursing the Logan'sport Building Corporation or the city of, is that the same? I'm thinking it comes from them back to the Building Corporation, the Building Corporation back to the city, is that correct?
The entity that spends the funds is the one that's gonna end up...
And so it's, it's the city of Logan'sport, the Building Corporation is basically the holding corporation, we have to have somebody that holds the property, it's titled in their name.
So, it's okay if we say reimburse the city, not the Logan'sport Building Corporation? Okay, all right, just wanted to make sure.
That's the intent. Okay, ordinance 2014-38, call for the vote.
Jeremy Ashcraft?
Yes.
Bob Bishop?
Yes.
Joe Buck?
Yes.
Gary Fox?
Yes.
Charlie Hastings?
Yes.
Chuck Ledau?
Yes.
Teresa Popejoy?
Yes.
Ordinance 2014-38 passes on second reading on a vote of seven in favor, zero opposed. Under new business, ordinance 2014-39, Councilman Bishop, please.
Ordinance 2014-39, an ordinance of the common council of the city of Logan'sport, Indiana, approving the additional appropriation for the clerk treasures office. Your Honor, I make a motion for the first reading on ordinance 2014-39.
Second. Ordinance 2014-39 has been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Call for a vote on ordinance 2014-39 on first reading.
Gary Fox?
Yes.
Charlie Hastings?
Yes.
Chuck Ledau?
Yes.
Teresa Popejoy?
Yes.
Jeremy Ashcraft?
Yes.
Bob Bishop?
Yes.
Joe Buck?
Yes.
Ordinance 2014-39 passes on first reading on a vote of seven in favor, zero opposed. Ordinance 2014-40, Councilman Hastings, please.
Ordinance 2014-40, an ordinance of the common council of the city of Logan'sport, Indiana, amending ordinance 2008-48 in its entirety, which now establishes the rules for Logan'sport Parks. Your Honor, I call for a first vote on 2014-40.
Second. Ordinance 2014-40 has been moved and properly seconded. I see Chief Clark approaching the microphone, right on cue. Is there any discussion?
I have some concern about number 14 in the list of, on the exhibit for the list of rules. Jan had sent me an email some time ago with these rules, and I told her that, to me, this ought to be, if she had staffing to police, I mean, I don't wanna get a, be getting calls to go send a police car down, 'cause somebody's got a glass jar, a miracle whip on a picnic, you know, or a kid said a bad word. We, we get cussed at all the time, it's freedom of speech unless it become disorderly or intimidation. But, I, I mean, I get why she's trying to do what she, she's doing, I get that, but I just, as far, because it says in here that the police department will be enforcing them along with her, and that's just one that I have exception with, I guess, that we would be getting a bunch of calls down there because kids are...
At the playground?
Saying bad, saying bad words.
Yeah, I agree.
I don't know if...
Kinda hard to...
Gambling, does it, if you're scratching a lottery ticket, is that gambling?
That's legal gambling.
Illegal gambling.
What if it's a 14-year-old who's swearing while he's scratching lottery ticket?
You got a different story there. But, I just had some concerns on that one.
Would it make you feel comfortable if we just removed that one?
It would, but I, I don't know what, you know, exactly what Jan's trying to accomplish. I don't know if we can work something to accomplish what she's after. But, yeah, I do have issue with that one, because we're gonna be expected to enforce it.
This is first reading, so you have a chance to revisit the next 30 days or so.
Can we, Mike, is it all right if we, we pass it as is, and then you can talk to Jan and, you know, communicate with us what we, what we can do to, to change it so that everybody's agreeable for a second reading?
Sure.
And if there's anything else in here that you have a problem with?
Okay.
Add that.
'Cause I glanced through them some time ago, and I told her that I had exception with that one, and it remained in here, so I didn't know if that was her only alternative. But, I definitely don't like, don't like that one, so, yeah, I will, I'll get with her and see what we can come up with.
Okay. Thanks.
Jan, is there a...
You're free to come up if you'd like to. Is there any further discussion on ordinance 2014-40? Call for a vote on ordinance 2014-40, first reading.
Jeremy Ashcraft?
Yes.
Bob Bishop?
Yes.
Joe Buck?
Yes.
Gary Fox?
Yes.
Charlie Hastings?
Yes.
Chuck Ledau?
Yes.
Teresa Popejoy?